We have a meeting on our V A P.
Is that the list that everyone that's on the call?
So far.
Ready. Yeah, you, winters killed it again.
I miss you.
They did. Number one is like.
Four years of road.
In charge of that victory.
There were a few more minutes. Is Catherine Campbell?
All right.
Okay.
He's looking kind of like, it's like they're looking at the quarter, you know, it's just that he's done going up, so.
I don't know what happens when it gets over about twenty-five people, starts another row again.
I don't know.
Well, if this is all.
Hey Jesse, I'm gonna mute you and then come back to you.
No problem.
All right.
Who's that, John? He's the clerk recorder for Yolo County. He's the Assessor Clerk Recorder Registrar of Voters.
Oh, oh, okay. I get it. The election.
Is this to deal with K W W or just in general?
No. It's on the agenda.
Just to talk about it.
Okay, we're gonna call to order this meeting in the Winter City Council on Tuesday, July seventh, twenty twenty. Tracy, can we get the roll call, please?
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Lauren?
Here.
Councilmember New?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Biazzi?
Here.
Mayor Cowan?
Here. Okay, next we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. Uh, here, the latest in the pledge.
Certainly, withstand the pledge allegiance to the flag.
And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Did you write new?
Okay, uh, before we get going here, um, I just wanna mention that due to the COVID nineteen and the governor's orders, this meeting's being conducted on Zoom and, uh, anybody that wishes to speak on any of the items will be allowed to do so. And there's a raise your hand icon. You can raise your hand, um, and we'll call on you at the appropriate time. Um, with that said, approval of the agenda. John, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, there are no changes to the agenda tonight.
I'll move to approve.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Lauren.
Second.
And seconded by Councilmember New. Um, Tracy, roll call vote, please.
I'm not sure what's on my mute.
Uh, Tracy, did we lose Tracy? Uh, she muted herself. Go ahead, Tracy, unmute yourself.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lauren?
Aye.
Councilmember New?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Biazzi?
Yes.
And Mayor Cowan?
Aye. Motion encouraged unanimously. Okay, at this time, we'll take public comment on any item that is not on tonight's agenda. If there's anybody that would like to address the council on a non-agenda item, please do the raise your hand icon so that the city manager can call on you. John, do we have anybody?
Uh, we have one person and that is Jack.
Okay, Jack, go ahead.
Go ahead. I'm sure that Jack is unmuted and.
Okay, Jack, uh, for somebody, Jack hasn't come through, uh. Okay, we'll try Jack again in a minute. I skipped over the council staff comments, so we'll do those and then see if Jack comes back. Um, we'll get started with, uh, Councilmember Lauren.
Thank you. June seventeenth, I participated in a League of California Cities Women's Conference Executive Session. We had a legislative update from California Assembly Speaker Anthony Reddine. On June eighteenth, um, Hispanic Advisory Committee met with Supervisor Saylor, uh, via Zoom. Representatives from Supervisor Prevent's Office and County Health Representatives, um, we met to learn about the increased COVID infections in the winners area. Um, positive tests now lead to track and trace procedures, and those procedures have led to evidence that outbreaks were due to family gatherings. We, uh, strategized and made, uh, culturally sensitive reminders, um, in English and Spanish to remind people to wear their, um, cubarecos or masks and, um, to stay six feet apart. Um, we distributed the copies to the restaurants in town, and then, uh, we distributed posters. Um, after our discussion, Supervisor Saylor, uh, executed a way for winners to be disaggregated from that larger pool so that when we look at our results, we know that they're the results just for winners. On June thirtieth, um, I made a video, uh, on our council's behalf congratulating Gloria Cortina, who gets sworn in tonight as mayor of Dallas. Um, July first, I toured the, um, Yolo County Transportation District Facility and also watched a presentation on their COVID nineteen cleaning procedures. Um, they've installed shields for their drivers, uh, they require masks for customers, and they clean with a quarterly cleaner, um, spray when the buses return. It's very thorough. On June, July second, excuse me, I met with, uh, Kenny Leiner. He's the new executive director for People's Creek Council. He's energetic, visionary, approachable, ready to start, uh, new outreach programs to benefit the community. On July fourth, I toured, um, uh, Yolo County Indoor Campus, uh, cultivation site. Was very impressed with how it was organized, how it was science-based, track and trace, uh, low water usage facility. On July sixth, uh, I met with City Manager John Bonlevy. Also attended a Hispanic Advisory Committee meeting. We're working with Apple Yolo and part of, uh, Yin, uh, which is, uh, Yolo County Organization to provide financial help to families, and we're asking the community to help us fundraise. Um, you could go to the Yin website and there, there's a link that says Apple Yolo, and if you donate, you can designate the money to go to winners residents. Um, on July sixth, oh, no, that, um, uh, we also, Hispanic Advisory Committee, I'm happy to report, um, voted to, to donate a thousand dollars to the town pool to help, um, you know, keep it, help get it started back up, um, under COVID or after COVID. Um, on July seventh, I participated in a planning session for Yolo County Transportation District's, um, upcoming meeting, and, um, I began as their chair on Monday for a year. Good luck to me, yeah.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Anderson?
Yes, Mayor, I didn't just report yesterday, um, sixth, I had a gender review with the city manager. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember New?
Thank you. On the seventeenth of June, I, uh, attended, uh, Yolo County Housing Closed Session. The city reported out from that, um, on the eighteenth, Seco Board, we spent most time talking about, um, early acting planning funds. I believe that's where we're getting some related for the overpass planning and the grant planning that we'll talk about later. Um, on the twenty-second, City Council and K W W Planning, May ninth, same thing with K W W, the city, rest with Wade and I, yes, with them. Um, on the twenty-sixth, I served dinner at, um, Winter Senior Housing, and my wife and I did that, and, uh, then, uh, after that, there were a few phone calls about fireworks and why we shouldn't have them, and people concerned about alleyways. We sent a packet about, um, city planning information about, um, it was called Growing Wealthier, I'll take care of that. Um, help, uh, economic growth in your town, and, um, then on this sixth, yeah, I met this morning with, uh, John Bonlevy about our agenda.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Biazzi?
Thanks, Mayor. On June the twenty-third, I attended the planning committee meeting via Zoom where there were lengthy discussions on tonight's agenda, and we'll be talking about like ten subdivision maps, so I've got a good background and you can present at that meeting, so. Also on the, let's see, today, earlier today, I met with the city manager for the agenda review.
Okay, thank you. As for myself, um, I was also in on the meetings with K W W that was mentioned by Councilmember New. And on the twenty-fourth, I had a, uh, Valley Clean Energy Subcommittee Zoom call. Um, and on the second, I had a homelessness, uh, commission meeting, and, uh, I also wanna note that I have received some emails from the last week or two. I received email from Richard Casaventia and Woody Friday and an in-person request from Michael Kalivas, all wanting to throw, uh, their names in the hat for the specific plan committee. I also received an email from Bruno Pitten, who's happy about the North Area Specific Plan and wanting us to be sure to employ deliberate, deliberative democracy, for which he included a white paper on it. Um, and I also had a tour of the cannabis grow facility outside of town. Um, I also received an email from Chris Turkovich and Bob Polkinghorn regarding the progress with the North Area Plan. And then I received another email from Richard Casaventia regarding his thoughts on the budget process. And then I've had, uh, several meetings with the city manager and the city attorney. Um, I need to take off my shoes to count those, so I'm not sure how many. Um, we'll go back to the public comment, um, for items not on the agenda. John, were you able to get Jack or anybody else to add public comment?
Say, um. Um, uh, Jack is unmuted right now. Come on, try it again. Jack? So Jack is connecting to audio. And I'm trying to mute you, Jack. Jack, go ahead. All right, Jack, he should be unmuted right now. Do you wanna go? Well, try it once, going twice. Um, Jack's unmuted, um, uh, but, uh, nothing from Jack. Just leave him. Ready to go. Uh, Woody Vicarade, uh. Would you go ahead? Woody, and unmute yourself again. There, go ahead.
Hey, John, it's Jack. Sorry, I'm having a problem with my microphone for some reason. Um, I was just curious, but Mayor, uh, Cowan kind of went over it on the special meeting between, or the council last week to go over the Cubeware winners, um, initiative with the development of the committee, the twelve-person committee, is that being formed? And that meeting, committee meeting before the nineteen days, or is that, what, what was the timeline more of the, that committee?
No, that, that committee gets formed after we get the, the new initiative on the ballot. So our focus right now is just getting the new initiative, um, written and on the ballot, and the forming of the committee will take place after that. So there's, there's time. The nineteen days is what we've got to get the initiative on the ballot.
Okay, so then afterwards, that committee is basically, uh, helping to redesignate the currently open space in the city, the, the sphere of influence within the urban growth boundary line? That's their purpose?
Correct.
Okay, correct. Those are just my questions.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else on the public comment, John?
They can, they can comment on that, Mayor.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Ethan, Ethan, is that correct? Is that something that, is that after it's on the November ballot, if it's approved, then we will form that council member committee, right?
Yeah, that's right. It, it's not, it's not at all imminent. It's, you know, we, we have to go through the process, but we'll, we'll, we'll come back at the next meeting to discuss, you know, the actual, those joint initiative, and then that will go on the ballot, and then if it passes in November, then we initiate that process. And there'll be, you know, the, the, the group that has the meeting will continue discussion. In the meantime, we could potentially start that early in anticipation, but it's still a long ways off, so there's a lot of time, so.
Thank you. Okay, thanks for pointing, finding that, Ethan.
And Mayor, Mayor, just really quick, I, I, I wanted during staff comments just to mention
Oh, yeah, yeah.
that we did have a close session, um, on, on employment for the city manager, and, and the only, um, action that came out of that is that council appointed ad hoc Subcommittee of Mayor and, uh, the Vice Mayor to, um, to service, to work with the city manager to, uh, to select a proposed, um, search firm to assist us with the, um, the selection of a new city manager, the recruitment of a new city manager. Um, so the, the ad hoc sector will be able to work on that in the actual contract with, with pre or comeback, um, and an open session for consideration by the council.
Okay, thank you, Ethan. All right, we'll move on to the consent calendar. John?
Uh, Mayor and Council, um, couple of items, items A and B are minutes from, uh, June second and, uh, special are the, both the regular meetings on June second and June sixteenth. Um, I'd like to just kind of recognize, uh, Tracy Jensen for her work on, uh, doing the minutes for a six-and-a-half-hour company meeting with lots of speakers. Um, item C is acceptance of grant from Seco, Councilmember New, I haven't mentioned this. Uh, this is a, uh, a, a grant which, uh, is basically a dual project with, uh, winters in Yolo County. This has to do with the I five oh five overpass, uh, project. This will do both planning and preliminary hearing on the project. Um, item D is a consultant agreement for conservation, eastern monitoring. This has to do with our elderberry, uh, preserve on the North Bank Trail. Uh, this is part of the fiduciary responsibility. They come as a third party, uh, to do overall monitoring on, uh, the elderberries out there. Um, items E, F, and G, these are acceptance, uh, of, uh, street projects and the concrete work that was done this year and last year. Basically, this is, uh, the SB one money that was spent in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, uh, the final, uh, acceptance on the sidewalk work. Uh, just a quick shout out to, uh, our Public Works Superintendent Derek Lucero and Shelley Dumbey for their work on, uh, coming up with the money. Uh, we, we probably put more money into sidewalks to shore them, uh, than we ever have. Um, item H is, uh, the police management rate. Uh, this, uh, includes two key factors in it. One is the consumer price index, which is as per, uh, the formula in, in the agreement. And the second is part of modification for the tipping fees or the dumping fees, uh, at the Yolo County landfill. Uh, and then finally, item I are quitclaim deeds, uh, for properties in the former Winter Highlands, now stone throw through Cave of Naian houses. Uh, these are the units along Ruby Slope, uh, where, uh, we actually narrowed the width of the street. Um, and, uh, we decided to quitclaim the property back over to, uh, the property owners for the maintenance of it, uh, and these are the quitclaim deeds, so. Uh, that is the consent calendar.
Okay, um, John, is there anybody raising their hand to speak to any of the items on the consent count?
Uh, no, Governor, I don't have enough.
Okay, then we'll entertain a motion on the consent calendar.
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Lauren?
One second.
Second and eight. Councilmember New. Tracy, can we do a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Lauren?
Aye.
Councilmember New?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Biazzi?
Aye.
Mayor Cowan?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, John. Okay, we're moving on to presentations. First time in a while we've had a presentation. We have Jesse Salinas. He's our Assessor Clerk and also our reporter and registrar of voters for Yolo County. And he's gonna apprise the council of the expected election changes for November. Jesse?
Hello, good evening, Mayor Cowan and council members. It's so nice to see people's faces. It's been a while. So, uh, thank you for giving me the opportunity to come speak to the council and the community of winters. So again, Jesse Salinas, the Yolo County Assessor Clerk, Recorder and Register of Voters, and I'm coming to you wearing my Register of Voters hat. And so hopefully, conservatively, you'll be okay. So, uh, just to kind of give folks a little bit of update, there's lots of changes on the horizon as it relates to the elections come November. Uh, this pandemic has really thrown us quite a curve, to put it mildly, so there's tons of changes taking place. I wanted to be able to go over highlighting some of these key changes that we were going to see in November. But to be able to do that, I wanna give the, uh, council and the community a little back, background of what took place in March. So in March, keep in mind, our election actually happened at March third, and it actually really because we had other kinds of challenges happening in June as it relates, as it relates to COVID nineteen. But if you recall, early part of March, we were just learning about the pandemic. And in fact, it was the, the full strength of what was taking place really hadn't yet. It was just the beginning, the very tip of the pandemic that was started on March third. And, uh, we, at that time, we had ninety-six polling locations. And, um, what we do is we train all those staff, and we also have a backlog of thirty to fifty coworkers that on Election Day can step in. And we know that's important because we typically have anywhere from a three to five percent cancellation rate on Election Day. So we use that, um, additional backlog of coworkers to step in in those urgent matters that happen on Election Day. So to give people the context, uh, a comparison, as you know, supposedly getting a three to five percent cancellation, typically coworkers will have about a five percent cancellation. And our inspectors, who are, are really more seasoned veterans than our, our leaders or supervisors, they're at each of the polling places, um, so we'll get about a ten percent cancellation. Because things happen, people's lives, things change. So we prepare for that accordingly. Well, to give you an idea of what we were scrambling with, um, March third, we had, uh, the coworkers were supposed to have five percent cancellation. We had a ten percent cancellation plan. And in terms of the, um, inspectors, which are people that really are the leads, they run those polling places because they are the folks who've been through a number of elections, and we can count to them, you know, all the rules, because there's a lot of rules related to elections. And as opposed to having a three percent cancellation, we have a fifteen percent cancellation. So five times, remember. And keep in mind, that was at the very beginning of the pandemic. And so things got obviously much worse as we went later into the month of March people. So we know that there's, there was a huge demand of need. Since then, I will give you a little background, we have, uh, taken polls of our survey, of surveying our, our coworkers, and we've asked all three hundred and ninety-six of them that we surveyed, and we asked them if, um, there is a second wave in getting a pandemic that's like it was in its first wave at its peak, would you be willing to come back and be a coworker? And at this point, we had a little over a twenty percent response of yes. So, um, and you can understand why, a lot of the coworkers that we have are, frankly, are in the high-risk category. So I understand their caution and concerns. So this, this, uh, really, these two factors have really caused us to relook at how we are running in, in the election. Some of you may have already learned too that there's been two executive orders that have come out from COVID-19 USO. The first was to allow counties to do mail-in ballots. That meant to be able to provide everybody who's an active voter and registered voter to get a vote by mail, a, a ballot in the mail. So if they choose to use a vote by mail option, they can do that. So that was the first executive order, and since then, there has been legislation in the eight sixtyth amendment bill that actually codified that executive order, so we now have the ability to send everybody a ballot, and we will be doing that in Yolo County. Uh, and that's an important first step because I give people an option not to have to come in a, a voting location to be able to cast a vote. But in addition, we do know that what history has taught us is that there are individuals that do need an in-person voting option, so we need to be able to provide that in some sort of manner. So what, what a second executive order put forth, and this was laid out, um, through, an executive order that right now has legislation in the pipeline to codify it afterwards, um, so that this will become law. And what it's done is it gives, um, counties some flexibility in how they can run their elections. It is essentially creating the opportunity to transition into a voter assistance center type county model. And so the key elements that have come out of that executive order are the following. For every ten thousand registered voters, there to have a, um, vote center, and, uh, we're calling them voter assistance centers. And again, for every ten thousand registered voters in Yolo County, we're writing about a hundred and seventeen, and it's expected to increase a bit because it'll happen before, then, uh, the ad hoc deadline will be August seventh, so we're expecting the numbers to continue to rise between now and then. So I'm projecting upwards, assuming, uh, close to a hundred and twenty thousand or half of cities. Which if you take the basic math, and you say a hundred and twenty thousand registered voters county-wide, that equates to twelve voter assistance centers throughout the county. Now, my interest is that I would like to see, even though it doesn't reach the threshold of ten thousand registered voters, I would like to put a voter assistance center there in winters. To give you the numbers, right now, we have listed one thousand registered voters. So it's, it's quite a step to still put a voter assistance center in winters. But as you, as you all know, I've always been committed to giving winters quality service, and I continue to try and do that in every aspect of this office and what we do. So in that, I, I would like to work collaboratively, I'll go a little bit more specific as to what that means, in line to be successful in winters. But we are looking to do a voter assistance center, and, um, every, a follow-up is for every fifteen thousand registered voters, there is also to be a drop box location, which means a place that people can just drop off, um, their ballots into a drop box. I'd like to see if we can find one there. Again, even though you're not at that threshold, I would like to make it convenient for the voters or winters, and I'd like to work collaboratively with you to find the best location to do that. So that's, that's the second piece of it. Another thing to keep in mind is in addition to this piece, but this is the challenge, because it's the good part, I think, I think it's good policy that they've done here, is that we are not just gonna open up this voter assistance center one day. It'll actually be opened up for four days. The Saturday, Sunday, and Monday prior to elections will be opened up for eight hours. So it will be weekend accessible for folks. So it will be weekend accessible for folks. And if they need to use that Monday to do it. So the hope is that we will provide these options on the three days prior. That hopefully, that will remove the burden on Election Day to have to show up on Election Day. So that's, that's an important piece. So whatever location we pick, it's got to be available all four days. And frankly, it really needs to be available even the Friday before and the Wednesday after. Because we have to set up on Friday, be ready on Saturday, run it through Election Night on Tuesday. And then kind of clean up and be out of there on the way. So we're looking from Friday to a Wednesday window to provide the services needed. So, big changes. So when I'm coming to the councils and the city leadership today and the community is, what I'm looking for is to establish a working group there in Winters. And the purpose of that working group would be to, first of all, help us, number one, identify and reserve the voter assistance centers. Okay, I can meet the parameters that I just talked about, plus we want to be concise. It has to be easy accessible, it has to be, have parking, it needs to have some spacing, adequate spacing, handle larger volume of people that could potentially show up. Because what we know is voters have a tendency of waiting till Election Day. Even though we're going to do everything possible between a drop box, vote by mail, and election offerings three days prior. People have a tendency of waiting until Election Day. So we're going to face it to handle all of that. So we need our help, we need our work. What I'd like to do is actually identify two locations. One is a backup, but I want to have the lead on it, we'll prioritize it. We want to be able to have a couple of locations that we identify. But I need the community to help me not only identify it, but make sure we have a vision of the time that we need. I'm also looking to engage the very diverse communities that have often been knocked out of the conversation. It includes language groups and disabled groups as well. So I'd love to have people that meet this diverse aspect of the community, be a part of this position making. And be a part of what we're putting together. Of course, the other piece of it is, we're also looking for coworkers. I just told you that we have a shortage. So right now, we know we have the county where about another 100 coworkers that we need to find. So, you know, the more we have, the better. But things could happen, or we could lose a lot of people pretty quickly because of this pandemic. I'm assuming we will get a second wave come fall. I'm hoping for the best, but planning for the worst. So we have to anticipate that may very well be the case. But we want to be able to handle that accordingly. So looking for recruitment of coworkers and volunteers. Even people who can help us with picking up the ballot boxes. And I'm really looking for the city council person to help volunteer and help with this charge. And getting staff from the city that have a liaison role so we can bring the community together. To keep that important factor, I want you to know is, there's three phases to this. What is identifying these locations and reserving them. I have till the end of July to make that happen. So we have a little lesson in mind. Got to find this quickly. Good thing is, I can probably do it pretty quickly in Winters. I know if we get the team together, you know, we can find those few items and make that happen. So I need to have that by the end of July. And the second phase of it would be August when we do the recruitment. We want to make sure we get coworkers from diverse backgrounds. We want to engage people in the community, help us with improvement from your local community. And then the last phase that really is going to run through all the way through the election is the messaging. How we share the messaging with those diverse groups. How we share with them the importance of having the different options that are available to. The vote by mail option, the ability to drop it off in a ballot box that's going to be located there. And the ability to vote Saturday, Sunday, and Monday, not just on Election Day. And what that new environment's going to look like. Because we're going to have to be respectful of physical distancing and all those guidelines that you all know about. That's why we're talking on Zoom right now. We're going to have to mean all of that. And so, you know, there's a lot of work to be done, but I know collectively, we can do that. And I've got my team on board, as you can see their names. I'm going to introduce Maria Coromata, who is going to lead to you right now. She's my new outreach specialist that just joined the team. And Catherine Campos, you see her name on there right now, she's not official, but she's available. She's my program manager, she will be by need on this project. We have, I designed an agenda, and there she is, an agenda, and we've got a nice timeline. And with these benchmarks in place that I just outlined for you. So we can provide some structure to the group. But it really is about the local community being prepared to step up and help us beat this challenge. But I do see this, and you all know me quite well, I see the glass as half-full, not half-empty. And we want to take this opportunity to do something special that's never been done before. Which is engage the community in a way that really promotes our workers. So with that, just wanted to open up, see if folks had any questions for me. And I want to thank you again for your time.
All right, thank you, Jesse. Does anybody on the council have questions for Jesse?
I just have a comment, I think it's really exciting and very proactive. And I love the idea of spanning several days, you know, not just having it the one day. I think it's a really great way to look at this election.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Lauren. Uh, Mayor Proton Biase?
He's muted.
There you are.
Jesse Salinas, can you please, can you maybe define for me again what it is exactly that will happen in that voter assistance center prior to the Election Day?
So in the voter assistance centers, you'll have the opportunity, the whole election process is going to change. People will be able to walk into any of the voter assistance centers anywhere in the county. And they'll be able to give their, they'll be able to sign in. And then we're going to have that sign in the electronic, because we're going to have these electronic coworkers. And they will be able to get on-demand ballot that is associated specifically to their residence. So they will get the right ballot, they'll be able to print out a physical copy of what their ballot is. It won't be electronic, it'll actually be a physical paper copy of the ballot. They will be able to fill it out at the voter assistance centers. And they will be able to drop off their ballot into the ballot box that we will have there available. So, it gives you a quick synopsis, plus the idea, what we learned is that there are people who just want to drop their vote by mail at these locations. So we're going to want to set it up so people can just drive by and drop it off and keep going. So, you know, make it as convenient as possible as well. Because that's what history has told us about the polling place that's been traditional, that people like to come back and vote by mail. They love their sticker, although I will tell you, we will give everybody a vote by mail sticker, iVoted sticker in their vote by mail. Because we did that in the last election and that major thanks for doing that. And people really are proud of that iVoted stickers.
Thank you.
So much.
All right. Any other questions, John? Is there anybody with a hand up that wants to comment? Uh, yes, Kate Ladish, go ahead, Kate.
Thanks, John. Kate Ladish, 400 Morgan Street, number 21. Jesse, thank you so much for coming this evening and talking about this and for all of the work that you and your staff have been doing on this. It's just, it's obviously crucially important work, and I'm delighted to get a sense of what's happening. Thank you for making provisions or working on provisions, for bringing one of the voter assistance centers to Winters. Even though we don't meet the benchmark in terms of the number of voters and aiming for drop off. And also, thank you for making it so that there could be a physical copy of the ballot printed out. I think that's really important for election security. It's hard to hack a piece of paper that somebody's made a mark on. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else, John? Uh, we're good. Okay, well, thank you very much, Jesse. We appreciate the presentation, and we'll get somebody volunteering to help you with this. And definitely, thank you for making sure we have one of the sites and a drop box. I think it is real important that we have that here in town. So people, you know, don't have to go find their way to Davis or Woodland to do it. So, thank you very much for that. And yeah, we'll put together a little team and help you out. I'm sure we can find some place to do it that'll work. Thank you very much.
Very appreciate your support. And if you'd like, you can, John, whoever it is that you want to get going on this from your staff. And whoever it's the city council, that's that would like to help out. Catherine will be by the need, I guess, so Catherine, you might, Catherine, if you want to, you can put it in your chat, your email address. So they all have that at their fingertips. And this way, we can, keep in mind, we are on a very fast track, so we need to make it in three weeks.
Is there somebody on the council that wants to volunteer for this now, Councilmember Lauren?
Yeah, I'm really excited to do it.
Okay, well, there you go. All right, you got your start right there.
From one Jesse to another, let's get this done.
That sounds great. Well, thank you, thank you so much, Councilmember Lauren. I appreciate your support and Mayor Cowan and the rest of the council. And, you know, I have to push this in my heart. Kate does amazing work in the community as well, so Kate, if you'd like to be a part of it.
I'm sure she'll help.
Great, all right.
All right. Thanks again, Jesse.
Thank you, everybody, thank you for your time.
Good. Okay, moving on, now to the discussion items. The first item we have is the Walnut Lane 10 subdivisions. This is a public hearing in consideration of the proposed Walnut Lane 10 mitigated negative declaration tentative map and planned development overlay. For a 54-lot single-family subdivision. And John, are you starting this, or is Dan?
You know what, actually, Mayor, you've done a perfect job of kind of introducing the items. So why don't I just go straight to our project planner, Dave Dowswell. And I think he's going to then turn it over to Tim Denham, who is the chairman representative for the applicant. So let me turn it over to Dave, we'll be off, go ahead, Dave.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight you have six items that are before you. The mayor touched on what they generally are. They have to do with the Walnut 10, Walnut Lane 10 subdivision. It's a 10-acre parcel at the northern end of Walnut Lane. It's on the east side. It backs up to agricultural property to the north. And there's also an agricultural parcel to the west that's outside the city limits. This applicant bought the property in the mid-'90s. It had an abandoned almond orchard on the property at the time. It was not actively being used and hasn't since been used. In February of last year, he applied to the city for all of the entitlements that are mentioned in the report. In June of last year, the Nova Planning Group was hired to prepare mitigated negative declaration. And they will talk a little bit about that later, I'm representative from that group. There was an April 15th video meeting that was hosted by Tim Denham on behalf of the applicant, Mr. Corbett. It was a video meeting like this is tonight. There were a number of participants that were at that meeting. I included a list of those participants in the staff report. Then on May 26th, the Planning Commission finally was able to consider this. This was after two cancellations, one at the request of the applicant in hopes that the Zoom meeting would no longer be needed. But unfortunately, as you see tonight, we're still there. The Planning Commission considered all the entitlements that are mentioned. It could have actually taken action on mitigated neg deck, but because you have to take action on all the other entitlements. They simply made a recommendation to you. There was a six-to-one vote to approve all of those entitlements. And you have the minutes that are included in your packet tonight. We did receive a letter from Chris Bytu, I think, or Byto, dated July 2nd, that was forwarded unto you. In the letter, she makes reference to some information that she believes was an error in the mitigated neg deck. She voices concern about the impact of this project on her water wells, their water quality, access during construction. And then one thing that I will mention as a future condition was the removal of some black walnut trees that are on the western edge of this 10-acre parcel. That will be removed at the time that the almond trees are being removed. And this is a 54-lot subdivision. Two lots will be the affordable lots that will be placed on the property. There'll be a duet, similar to what's being done in the Stone Throw subdivision. The applicant is asking to reduce the minimum lot width from 60 feet, which is the minimum for interior lots. And 70 feet for corner lots. And the average lot size to less than 7,000 square feet. That is the reason for the PD overlay. Tim Denham will talk to you and show you pictures of the actual subdivision itself. Let's see, at the Planning Commission hearing, Jack Vickrey spoke, as did a number of other people. And at that hearing, he discussed the possibility of reducing the number of lots that backed up to his property, which is on Orchard Lane. There are 11 lots shown on the map, and he asked if that could be possibly reduced to 10. I met with him and discussed this further on June 3rd. The net effect, if there was a lot reduction, would be that those 10 remaining lots could meet the average lot size that I just explained that they're asking for the PD overlay for. At the various meetings, there were issues that were discussed. They focused mainly on flooding. That area, as you know, has been subject to flooding in the past. And how will this project work with that situation? Will it alleviate it, will it contribute to more? You know, that, those kind of questions. Now, Mr. Denham will address increased traffic, the concern that Walnut Lane won't be able to handle the additional traffic. Traffic analysis that was done indicates that it is able to, as you probably think when Walnut Lane was built. This property was planned for development, but unfortunately, many years went by before it actually took to where it is tonight. And then the lack of secondary access for an emergency. Right now, you can only really come in Walnut and go out Walnut. The applicant has been working with the property owner to the north to get access on the gravel road that leads from Railroad Avenue to the northern end of Walnut Lane. And so, I mentioned to you early on that despite how I was concerned about the impact that the felling of the black walnuts could have on their horses. Something I wasn't aware of, but then I guess black walnuts produce something that's toxic to horses and can have a very deleterious effect. So I've added a condition to the conditions that you have that indicates essentially that prior to any action to remove those trees, the property owner would be notified. And that 48 hours in advance, and then the removal of those trees will be done in a manner so that their impact is not on the adjoining property. I also should mention, there is a condition number 23 that's highlighted in bold. And that condition, should you choose to adopt it, is in response to the meeting that staff had with Mr. Vickrey about possibly reducing the number of lots. And again, with that, I'll turn this over to Mr. Denham, who has a PowerPoint presentation. And we'll go into further depth on those issues that were raised at the various meetings.
Okay, thank you, Dave. Mr. Denham?
All right, thank you. I'm going to be down with Wood Rogers, the planning and engineering firm that was hired by Jim Corbett to prepare the maps that are before you tonight. Well, thank you for having this meeting. You know, we're doing the best we can to deal with COVID and trying to move things forward. We submitted, you know, 17 months ago, we've probably been out almost two years because there were some times before that. You've probably, some of you named that Jim Corbett, he is a property owner, he's owned a property about 25 years. Our firm has done a lot of work in this area, took the drainage works, we're pretty familiar with what's going on there. And I wanted to just kind of, I'll jump in and share a series of exhibits to show you where the site sits in relation to the city. I must have got it wrong, but... I'm not in cooperative here. I apologize. I apologize. Here we go. So again, this shows you where the site, which is highlighted in yellow, Walnut Lane 10 is at the end of Walnut Lane, which is in the northern edge of the city. It is directly west of the Farmstead Project, which is highlighted in purple, north of the Almond Drive subdivision. So just kind of give you a point of reference as to where that sits in relation to the town and the neighbors. And I'll show you the subdivision map. Okay, this is the subdivision map that was submitted that shows the 54 lots. We have lots 37A and 37B, which are the duets that Dave talked about that helps to meet our affordable housing requirement for modern income units. And we are paying fees a little for the balance of the low and very low income units. The lots here on the perimeter, you're kind of partly a function of the shape of the site, but we we determined to make some of our, excuse me, some of our, take that extra space that we had and put it around the perimeter site. So these lots are 109 feet deep along the southerly edge, and also about 180 deep on the northern edge. We were trying to be kind to the neighbors and provide a little extra depth there. We have heard the comment that if you lose a lot here, you would be consistent with the R1 zoning. That's actually not the case, we'll give you a little under the 7,000 square foot, maybe a little. So I'd really prefer to keep the lot for a number of reasons. There are a lot of costs with this, you know, developing this project, a lot of fees, the drainage fees, and some of the grading costs that we're going to solve some of the issues with regards to the funding issue. I'll move off on that one and go on, if there's any questions.
I think you can proceed and we'll do questions after you're done.
Okay, super. My apologies, I'm struggling a little with the screen. I wanted to talk a little bit about the drainage situation that exists. There is a So you should see that screen now, it's the, this is the existing 100 year floodplain as it exists today, based on Wood Rogers' analysis of this northeast winners area. You have a situation where water is spilling over the northeasterly, the northern property line and moving from the north and coming across the site. There's a low area that fills up with water. And as this comment indicated and showed pictures in your letter, that fills up and then begins to migrate south into the Almond Drive subdivision. And in 1995, that very significant flood, that really impacted that subdivision. So with the proposed grading of this project, we will, we will raise the northerly edge and 60 block of that water and then redirect what hits the site to the east. And I'll show you kind of the proposed drainage solution for that. And so what happens is that water is intercepted, it will flow overland and within our underground storm drain system into the V ditch, which goes east across the Farmstead property and south to the culvert that is in Grant Avenue. And so that water will no longer travel south. So that is a big improvement to the flood situation with the existing subdivision. You know, something that this project will bear the cost of providing those improvements. I will note that, you know, we researched the subdivision to the south, and I won't get too much into that detail, but in ways to some, it is, it sits low in the culvert, at the west end of Orchard Lane is about a foot and a half, two feet lower than the intersection to the east. And so that's partly what contributed to their issue with the flooding. And that, they need to make sure that these storm drain lines are cleared from any obstruction. So what happens is the storm drain goes between two homes here to Almond Drive, and then travels east, it goes between two homes to a storm drain that then goes down the eastern of the property line here. And so we will intercept this water that's coming from our site south instead of east. But they still have some issues just with the way this subdivision is designed. But it will be a huge improvement to what they are experiencing. I don't know if you're seeing this on the screen or not.
Or none.
If they just, they realize you're not. I'm sorry. There we go. And so again, this is, this is, we will raise the pad raise of these lots to block out this water, capture what hits the site, convey it via a V ditch east and then south to the culvert at Grant Avenue. So that will, that will last and improve our situation and simply avoid what happened in 1995 that others provided photos of. Some other exhibits now. And maybe, maybe too much detail here, well, this, we have an exhibit that shows the the proposed cut and fill, so again, you can see, see that. And so what's happening is this low area here is being raised. And then the streets are actually slightly cut, that's what red represents. And you can see the northerly lots in blue are also being filled, so that low area is being filled, the northerly area is being filled. And the white is essentially catching existing grades, we're trying to catch existing grade with the fence line along that southerly edge. With regards to, just talking about water a little bit. There we go. Am I overlapping your photos onto my screen or are you seeing the full exhibit?
The full.
Okay, there we go, I got fixed. So we are extending a 12 inch water line that exists in Walnut Lane north to the property line with hot seller to the north. And that 12 inch water line will then have an eight inch water line that ties east and is south to connect to Almond Drive. By installing that, we will improve the water quality of what exists now in that, you know, Almond Drive and Orchard Lane or sort of dead end situation. So that helps to improve the water quality of the existing subdivision. And then ultimately, this will connect to the east, to the Farmstead Project when that is formed. And then the sewer just quickly, you know, the sewer actually goes to the west and down to, and eight inch sewer line that is in Walnut Lane. I'll maybe go back to the regional, the regional map to talk about. Secondary access was an issue that was raised, and Mr. Corbett is in the process of working with, negotiating with this hot seller for an 80 foot emergency vehicle access over his existing gravel driveway. We have talked with city staff and fire department and police department, that is an acceptable access for them, they indicated it is. That is our preferred option, but it hasn't been resolved. But we do have a condition of approval on a amount that requires that to be resolved with our improvement plans. So we do have time to resolve that. Our plan B would be to go, go to the east through Farmsteads. We would have to construct a gravel road to provide secondary access. Obviously, that's a more expensive and a longer stretch of road that would have to be built, and so that's our plan B. So we feel like we have options to provide secondary access. You know, maybe worth noting is that the, you know, new home construction now requires fire sprinklers. You know, there were some concerns about wildfire, those sorts of issues. I think with ag land surrounding this project, you know, it's probably not likely to occur. And so we feel like we have a viable solution for the secondary access. And then lastly, there were some issues raised with just traffic on Walnut Lane. This is kind of an offsite issue, but Walnut Lane is a residential street, it is sized to carry this additional 54 units. I don't know if Alan Mitchell's on the phone, he can certainly answer questions on that. There's about 109 units existing that are used Walnut Lane. We're adding 54, so about 169 units, just ballpark, average daily trips, that is about 10 units per single family unit. And so about 16, 90 in terms of average daily trips. A residential street like this can carry, you know, I think the city standard's worth a house of 4,500, so about a third of what the standard carries. So there will be additional traffic, but the street has the capacity to carry that traffic. And there were some concerns expressed about, you know, conflicts with pedestrians, you know, at the park. And then also the narrowness of the street by the Mariani plant. And what's happened is a lot of folks with trucks, I think, that work Mariani, they're parked there because they have shade trees from the Cypress trees. And so maybe there are solutions there in terms of red curve, but these are offsite issues that the city will need to take the lead on. Finding those solutions, but we think there are solutions there. And with that, I will stop my presentation and, you know, I'd like to ask for your support for our project so we can move forward. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Denham. Do we have Alan Mitchell on the line, would you like to add in anything?
All right, Alan, Alan, go ahead.
Hi. Yeah, I stand by all that Tim stated, compared to the water, I actually had the water master plan and consulted, run the water model, and the fire flow is greatly increased by, with their project. So that's a, that's a good thing. There was an existing deficiency identified in the master plan with well sixes out of service, was a fire in their areas. So this helps some trades and redundancy and really helps that matter, so I would mention that as well. As far as the access, the saving grace, you know, there's, it's, the existing condition when this subdivision is built is sufficient. But we do have the future development to the east of the screen property. And there's two locations that will basically tie in and take traffic over to the extension of East Main Street, which really will help, most people will probably stop coming down Walnut and head over to Main Street to get to a civilized intersection. With the installation of the, of the roundabout, it's very, very much better, it's a lot better to handle traffic, as you know, because that project probably wouldn't be able to go if that roundabout wasn't there. So with the roundabout, we're able to take a lot more traffic through that intersection. So other than that, I reviewed everything and obviously improvement plans will be coming and details will be worked out. But at this point, they're showing that everything that from an engineering standpoint should be approved.
Okay, thank you, Alan. Is there any council questions or staff?
I have questions, but I'll hold them till after we come in.
Okay, all right, well, we'll go ahead and open the public comment at 7:30. John. Okay, let's, I'm looking for anybody who's going to raise their hand. Okay, Whitney or Jack? Whitney.
It's actually me this time.
Okay, very good, your voice sounds right here. I go for it.
Whitney, I hear you at 1:15 Orchard Lane. Thanks for giving us time to talk about this. I wanted to bring up a couple of points about this project, and kind of some of the challenges that we've had against this from the start. You know, these are kind of unprecedented times with everything going on, but, you know, we've really been a bit discouraged by the Zoom meetings, and, you know, I think that a lot of people agree that they're just not quite as effective as meeting in person. And, you know, from the beginning with this project, you know, we were kind of a meeting with the city, the developers, to discuss different aspects of that project, and it hasn't really happened. The one virtual meeting that we had, there were so many technical difficulties that the majority of our neighborhood wasn't able to participate. You know, whether it was a lack of accessibility or because they just couldn't figure out the technical aspects of it. So that's been a little frustrating for some of our neighbors that we've heard from. You know, and none of us, none of us are trying to, you know, shut this down or, not that we don't want it to happen, but we truly want it to be the best that it can be. And we want to be involved and we want to be heard. And I know there's been a lot of talk in the city recently about community being heard and upcoming projects. And this is something that's going to obviously deeply affect our neighborhood for the foreseeable future. So we'd really like to work out all of these details. Especially for me, the planned development overlay, I think, is something that should be reevaluated personally. We're only talking about an eight house difference between the existing neighborhood and this proposed development. So I really would challenge the developers and engineers to think a little more creatively. There's been a lot, I understand, that's gone into mitigating the flood issues that this neighborhood has had. But I think that there should be some creative solutions that wouldn't necessarily require a plan to build an overlay. I mean, we have neighbors that, you know, are still the original owners that have been invested in this project from the time they watched their houses being built, because it was always understood that that was going to be a mirror image of our existing neighborhood. So I just think that really, this is a great area, we, all of us love it, our neighborhood, our residents in our neighborhood. And we want to see this project be the best that it can be. And in addition to that, kind of through the planning commission process, we've definitely been a bit discouraged on how that went. All of us, I shouldn't say all of us, but many of us have been very, have been reading all of these hundreds of pages, you know, for the mitigated negative declarations about flooding issues and all of the things that are going to affect our homes. And the planning commission, we had, you know, a few days to review all these pages. And I think Commissioner Contreras was the only one that kind of brought up that he didn't really have enough time to go through and really digest all of this information. And there was even like the addendum to the M and D was directly conflicting with what the planning commission was voting on before it got passed on to you guys. So I think this project has great potential and we're excited to see what could possibly join our neighborhood. But we truly want it to be the best that it can be, since it's affecting us on so many levels, as far as flooding and gaining new people, they talked about the traffic issues and things like that, which I know the city has been working to get all of that sorted out, which is great. But yeah, we'd just, we'd like to see if you guys can meet.
Thank you, Whitney. John, next.
Just a reminder to everybody, try to keep your comments to three minutes. Yeah, no other hands are up from the public.
None, okay.
Oh, wait, wait, Jack is coming back. Jack. Hey. Go ahead, Jack, we, success, you're going to speak up a little bit, yeah.
All right. Sorry about my earlier issues. I would try to not mimic much of Whitney's comments, but the planning commission meeting that we had back in May, it was good, but there were a few issues. And I'll kind of elaborate a little bit on Whitney's comments. We inducted the two new commissioners at that meeting, and we had the approval of the 200 page mitigated neg deck that was identified in the agenda that's having not been given to them, yet they voted on it. Also, of all of the comments that were brought up by the public in regards to the traffic and safety, none of that was discussed or reviewed by the commissioners afterwards. And as Whitney mentioned, Greg Contreras did recognize that there were a lot of issues that were brought up, and he thought that there was more time that was needed to digest this and plan, or propose to table the item, which was not voted on by, or agreed upon by other commissioners. Also, one of the new commissioners suggested that this item had been on the agenda long enough at one meeting. And I thought that was a little disconcerting. I don't want that to be the impression that the public has of the planning commission, that one meeting commission, that one meeting is all it takes to get a development onto the council's agenda. And I believe that the council members that have been on the planning commission would agree with that. Uh, I don't think that's the right image that you want the public to have, that things are just gonna get pushed through. Also, during my presentation that I made, um, while I was talking, four people yielded their time to me to allow me more time. That was not identified and I don't fault really anybody for that. Um, but, you know, we're trying to allow three minutes per person and, and people are yielding their time and I'm not being aware of it and I'm trying to rush through. It really kind of deteriorates the quality of the presentation, of the effective message, the effective message that we're trying to prepare, uh, or present. So I have a, a presentation, which I was hoping to have this meeting in person to hand it out to the side of you. Um, I wrote, John, let me share my screen to, to go over that or not, but if that's a possibility, I would really appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Um, John, do we have others that wish to speak?
Uh, yes, uh, Christina.
I can't hear my name. Well, let's, let's see how many people we got and see how much time we have. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, cause Jack, you got about a minute. But, um, so, uh, next up is Christina.
I'm trying to meet you, Christina. There, uh, go right ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to introduce myself and I'll call and Christopher Vasquez, you all have sent several letters for me, a very long one that came in public comments with the first round of, um, the naked commentary. I followed up with a letter on, being second, more specific to our property, the, who's sitting next to me here, he and I, um, own the property at the end of Walnut Lane that is in the county that runs the entire western boundary of the Walnut Ten project. Um, first, I'd like to thank the council for going through all the documents and public comments. Um, I appreciate some of the changes to native decks that, that made with some of these suggestions that I had in the long letter I wrote as well as considering walnut trees. I know it's a strange thing, but they can, um, cause harm. And overall, I just wanted to add that I support everything that Jack and Whitney are saying. None of us who have talked amongst ourselves in the neighborhood or come to any of the meetings wants this stopped. But there are quite a few things that are of interest for the neighbors and very difficult when we get three minutes at the end of mission meetings and we don't have the ability to sit down and really discuss things with, you know, the plumber or others and in the planning commission meeting when there is no, no discussion. And not that we've been very hard through this process to try to say, yes, we, we generally like this, but, you know, hey, there are these problems and letters can be very long. I've heard long ones, they're not quite the right tone always, but hopefully we can continue having discussions to make this better. And one thing I wanted to add about the street issues on Walnut Lane, regardless of the Walnut Ten project coming in, we have a problem where the end of Walnut meets the traffic circle. We have a problem when the vegetation piles get put there, we need employee parking, um, and that may be a matter that needs to be handled completely separately from the Walnut Ten process or what needs to be done there. It really isn't the traffic flow problem. It's a train safety problem because it is a one track through there, um, with cars and debris and, um, construction from the house and the Mariani parking. And if we are bringing more people in, it's just gonna be more people single tracking, um, through there some good portion of the day. And I do want to add that I really appreciate Mr. Britt and Tim Denham. You have answered questions, been available to us in the neighborhood. But I do think for the city going forward, figuring out how we can have more access as neighbors with these different initial plans coming through is gonna be crucial to, um, everyone getting, getting heard and still heard and the meeting set. And I just want to second what Baghiri was saying about the planning meeting. It was really disconcerting that there was absolutely no discussion. Um, and, you know, again, don't want to stop this, just want it to be a fantastic community for the new people coming in and all of us who are gonna be their neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina. John, is there anybody else?
Um, no, uh, Jack's put up his hand, but he had about 30 seconds left. I might point out that the Jack put in almost 10 minutes in the planning commission because we did, uh, allow the yielding of time, so, um, and we did show, uh, most of Jack's presentation. Uh, he didn't, uh, submit anything for tonight.
No, I had a printed out, I was hoping to have it submitted in person. Uh, so I'm happy to email it to you, uh, to have it submitted for the public record.
And, and we can do that.
Okay. Um, okay, if there's, if there's no objections from council, since we don't have any other commenters on the project and I kind of thought we'd have more, I'm fine with.
I, I just, I just wanted to reiterate, you know, that, uh, first off, see, I appreciate Tim and Jim being available and Dave Dowell meeting with me. Um, the cohesion of the neighborhood is the thing that mattered the most to me and why it is why I met with Dave. The rest of the project, I'm, I think is great. The south boundary along our property line, where we were requesting to have one lot removed was to make that more of a cohesive flow of the medium low-density units that exist now to these higher density units that will exist in the future. You don't have properties backing up to each other that are of different densities. You have a, a roadway buffer in between that it kind of helps ease that transition. And in my presentation to the council, I highlighted numerous other areas of town where that does exist, where you go from high-density to medium-density or low-density. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Um, note, uh, also, uh, Tim Denham, uh, has his nest seat again, so.
Okay. Um, yeah, go ahead, Tim.
I think, I believe I'm muted or am I unmuted?
You're muted.
Okay. All right, thank you, John. Well, yeah, I just want to be clear, uh, you know, the advocate wants to delete condition 23, which is calling for the loss of one lot and, and/or rezoning that property. We, we do the math and we come in under 7,000 square feet, so if he does need our one zone there, it's sort of a tricky way that makes us lose another, yet another lot. Um, there's a lot of cost with this project. We'll be paying 300,000 in drainage fees toward the, the drainage, drainage solution, grading costs of having to, you know, cut the drainage and pour dirt to raise the lots to solve the funding issue. And, and so it hurts this project to lose lots and the fees and costs start to create competitive disadvantage with this, this site versus other sites, get a city and other cities. Uh, we could do something like an increased setback along that southern link property line and maybe, maybe that helps to address some of the concern of, you know, the standard is 25 feet, your yard setback. You know, maybe we could go 30 feet to a one-story and 35 feet to a two-story, sort of pushing those two-story elevations further away from the property line so the neighbors don't feel like they're, they're looking down into their yard. And, uh, so with that, I'll conclude. I just want to be sure that, uh, you know, we, to express we don't agree with the condition points we had, would like to do that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Tim. Um, anybody on the council have some questions for staff?
Do you want to close the public hearing?
Yeah, we'll close the public hearing at 7:47.
Um, I, yeah, oh, go ahead, Bill.
So, yeah, I, I have a number of questions for, some for clarification, some for just comments. So for on the, we talked about the drainage part or the flood control. You're talking about basically a levee along the northern border of this Walnut Ten development. And then the, the state was that included the screen property. So will that levee slash whatever you wanna call it, go all the way across Walnut Ten and the screen property prior to Walnut Ten being developed? So if they, if they have to be built out at different times, will that levee be put in prior to Walnut Ten being, to be able to happen before screen?
And note, uh, how about either Tim or, um, looking for Alan. Tim, we just want to answer the question.
Sure, I could, I could jump in. There's actually two places where the water that stacks up on a house on our property spills over. And so one is at the northwestern link edge of the Walnut Lane Ten. And even though it may only be an inch or two deep as it spills over, if it's 100 feet wide, that, that becomes significant as you saw in the 1995 flooding. And then the other place where it spills over is actually to the east, like a regular exhibit if you like, that's supposed to process the, the eastern portion of the screened property and, and backs around the Grant Avenue culvert. Maybe you share.
I guess the question is, will that levee be built all the way across?
It's, it's not, you know, it won't be built all the way across. It's, it's not a levee. It's, these, these lots along the northern edge of our property are being raised. So you can see here's where water spills across. Yeah, it's a minor amount, but yet it makes a difference. And then the bulk of the water is actually spilling over here. So the, the Farmstead project we're working on will have a berm and a, and a channel that addresses that issue for the Farmstead property. And this is a different shed, a different issue. So there, there's been a need for a levee all the way across.
Well, my, my concern would be if that water coming from the north comes to that raised part, the berm, whatever you wanna call it, and then will travels to the east around the edge of that levee, will it then come back into that subdivision?
Yeah, all the lots along the north of the edge are raised, uh, anywhere from a foot to a foot and a half.
Yeah. Just want to make sure that nothing is able to get in, you know. If we don't have a, that raised area all the way across the screen property as well as the Walnut Ten, that the water isn't gonna be able to get into the subdivision.
Right.
Um, so part of that interim measure, if Walnut Ten goes in prior to the screen, is having a beach across the screen property and then heading south to Grant Avenue? That's correct?
That is correct.
So who's gonna maintain that beach? If that goes in, when Walnut Ten goes in, screen is built out for a long time, who maintains that beach?
You know, it would probably be, you know, I don't know the answer exactly to that. It'd probably be a city maintenance. Uh, it could be required of the property owner, either Corporate Lane or, excuse me, Walnut Ten or the Farmstead property to maintain that so it's free of debris, so it can flow.
Alan, can you address that? Alan Mitchell?
Yeah, that's a good question. Um, quite frankly, that hasn't been, uh, resolved yet. That's gonna be on private property, so unless the city doesn't ease it for maintenance, the city doesn't have any business getting in there, working, cleaning that out. So we're gonna have to work out that, that detail and, uh, that would be something that would come with the subdivision improvement agreement, the improvement plans. But, yeah, you're right, that needs to be, uh, that needs to be nailed down.
I, I don't think that's something that the city should take responsibility for. I think that's either Walnut Ten or Screen, one or the other, both of them need to take responsibility for maintaining that beach until the permanent drainage solutions are in place when everything happens with both of us.
Right. And I would agree with that comment, too.
Okay. Um, so there's also, I know, you know, part of the discussion just is in the flood zone, so we have very high fees for our flood, developing our flood zone areas. We're not over $52,000 an acre, so, you know, we're talking pretty hefty pricing. I think, you know, that the proposal for reducing the number of lots out there, that's gonna spread that cost over fewer lots and raise the price of what they're gonna have to call houses for intervention. So I think, you know, we need to stick with the 54, in my opinion, to be able to help to keep that cost and bill to spread it out over more houses. Um, the improvements to the channel itself, well, you know, some, you know, there's gonna be some, some area along 128 where there's a channel on there and possibly is there gonna be a larger culvert out the way under 128 to buy into that PGE channel?
Correct. The, yeah, the ultimate, uh, plan is a larger culvert, a deeper channel that's supposed by PGE and then an extension of the channel to the north. Um, as things get developed, those improvements would be done incrementally and as the city collects the fees.
So, George, I think it's condition number 12. Um, when we talk about grading, so in some of our infill subdivisions that have been recently, we've had problems with flooding and neighboring subdivisions. So, um, if we look at condition 12, let's see if I can find it online, here. Um, it says pursuant to the general plan, plan policy, uh, grading shall be carried out during dry months when possible. I think we should strike that when possible part and we need to put a specific time period in there, say between April and September, what a reasonable time period is for that dry period, because I do not want to see grading happen out there, get partway down, we get the rainy seasons and then the neighbors get flooded. So I think we need to be very specific on that and I think we called that in some of the previous subdivisions, that was gonna be a barino clause in our future conditions. So I'm not seeing that in 12. We're being very, I think, not specific enough when we say when possible. I think that should be struck in there.
I, I would echo, I would echo that one.
You want me to?
The problems we had with the Valdez property. And it's not uncommon to have a season for grading of April through October. Um, I know Solano County does that, um, on their grading for, you know, properties out of the country and stuff. So it's not unusual to have that, that requirement.
Um, so when we talk about the traffic impacts on Walnut, I mean, and I see, and I know this meets our, our street standards, the levels for the C. You know, I think the roundabout can handle that traffic. The city may need to look into the future. When these things start happening, if we need to make any changes on Walnut, also to the roundabout, as far as no parking on inside, we can look at that. I would like to hear, you know, one of the, some of the comments were brought up for having fire truck access through there. And I would like to know if our fire chief is online or a representative from party party that can address that. I believe they're in favor. They say that it's adequate, they can get through there. I would like to see a screen. Would they confirm that for us?
Hi, Mayor. Yes, you are correct. We don't have any concerns of, of Walnut. It does meet the city's requirements for accessibility, uh, for fire and emergency access, can you?
Thank you, Chief. Um, and I think one of the comments that I believe Ethan made at the planning commission meeting had to do with the densities of the development. And I believe Ethan mentioned that if we reduce the density of this project, there may be a conflict with the housing accountability act. Ethan, was that something that, can you explain that to us if you're available?
Sure, yeah, I'm here. Um, sorry, my, my video back. Um, so what, what it is, is the way that this is structured right now, we have the plan development overlay, which is something they need to get more density onto that project that is what, what is currently allowed for zoning for that property. Um, so as it is, there's a legislative, uh, approval that they need in order to develop the property, the project as they want with those additional units. Um, if they were going to develop the property, um, with a number of units that was consistent with our zoning, then it would be subject to the, to the housing accountability act. And that means that in order to, uh, to disapprove the project or to decide not to approve the project or to, to condition the project in a way that would make it feasible, you would have to, um, make very specific findings that are outlined in, in the law that essentially say that, um, you know, you have to make a finding based on substantial evidence that there's a, you know, imminent threat of public health, health or safety in order to, um, that would occur if you were to develop the project. And that's, that's, as you can imagine, it's very tough to make that finding. As it stands right now, though, because they need the, the, um, the PD overlay in order to develop the project. As it stands right now, though, because they need the, the PD overlay in order to develop the project, that's not the case. So you could, you know, tell them to come back with a project that's more consistent with what this thing does.
Thank you. Um, you know, and some of the comments that were out there about having time to comment on this, I think there's been, my opinion is we have a bit of time. This was mitigating, Nick Deck was put out, I believe, late January, early February. And then that commentary had got extended out. I remember a lot of comments on it. I went through all that myself. I have time to go through it all. And I think the, the, um, the study was a rest. Most of those comments are really, I got all the comments adequately. In my opinion, I think we're, we're meeting the requirements of, you know, of mitigating anything that would be potentially caused by this subdivision. Um, I'm not sure, I've heard that this subdivision is supposed to be a mirror image of, of the ones in Onlin Drive. I don't know where that mirror image on that came from. I've never heard that before, but I don't know that that was anything in any of the city planning. I figured that would be a mirror image, but I have to say, I, that's something I haven't, we're here to, to work on with. Other than that, I think that's all the comments I have right now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember New?
Your, your, your sound's still up.
John, can you help him out?
I'm doing my best right now.
There you go.
Okay, Lauren, thank you. Um, this has been addressed somewhat, but, um, I had, uh, uh, two, three people calling to talk to me about, you know, access and egress. And I'm looking at, I went out today actually and looked at the gravel road, it's the north end property that's, uh, on Hostetler property, actually. And I understand that it's being negotiated so that there is access, that the fire department could get in there if they needed to. Um, and I tried to, you know, make people comfortable, um, hearing that. And then they brought up a question about, well, what if there was some kind of chemical spill or something and you wanted to get out and couldn't get out of Walnut? So is there going to be a possibility if there's an emergency? I'm not saying for everyday use. That's a real disaster type emergency that people could get out on that gravel road. That's, that's just a question or a thought to keep in mind, maybe to ease the, the minds of people that live out there. So that's, that's.
Sure. I, I don't see why not. That would just ruin, you know, open the gate and have PD come out and control traffic. We're probably need some traffic control on the gravel road to let people get out, but that's, that's obviously doable and hopefully it's never an issue.
I hope not also. Thank you.
Go ahead, Tim.
Jim Corbett is negotiating with Hostetler now, but he will have to, you know, purchase the right of that easement to allow access across his property. But then, then was the idea is if you need a second way out for the residents that exist there now, that would provide as well as fire truck and, and, and what's, you know, sheriff or, or police access. So that, that is the idea.
Okay, Councilmember Lauren?
I have a comment and a question first. Um, I wanted to go back to the concept of mirroring, um, what, what was there and built from the nineteen nineties. I, I heard that also kind of, uh, being thrown around. And, um, when you look at the long net development, it, it was built in the nineties and it probably had some, um, ideas of, of what would come in the future. But, um, in the year twenty twenty, we have a different set of needs and we have a different set of priorities. And, um, and, and we have, uh, uh, new things that are weighing on us as far as, um, you know, air and space and housing. And, uh, so I, I think that even if that was a concept that was, um, uh, tossed around in the nineties when the, the original houses were built, it's something that doesn't reflect our current values. And I, I wanted to, uh, with that in mind, ask Jim or Alan or Tim, if there was, uh, any discussion about adding more duplexes, uh, it's, it, it seems to me that what we can benefit from isn't lowering the density. It's increasing the density and having more of the housing that's, that's for people in the middle, you know, people that, uh, can't, uh, afford, um, the bigger houses that are being built today. Um, so was there any discussion about increasing duplexes or increasing density in that area? Tim?
Yeah, I mean, the video is blocked.
I'm sorry.
I guess I can answer without being on, on video. Uh, but we, we talked early on about the affordable housing issue. And the decision was made to incorporate the two moderate income, you know, duet units onsite rather than just simply paying a fee and pushing it all off somewhere else. So we, we trying to be kind and said that, um, you know, we're trying to work in the confines of what we, what we had. And so you're balancing all those things. You should do a layout and, um, and do the best job you can with, with the constraints you have. So I think, you know, I hear what you're saying, but we ended up, you know, negotiating in the housing agreement where we had the two duplex units and then the other, uh, six low income and very low income units were provided off. So we paid the fee on that. So hopefully that answers your question.
It, it, it answers. In the future, I just, uh, you don't want to stress that, um, that, that housing for the middle. If you, I don't know if you get, um, the Western City, and I'm seeing that there's in last month's issue, a really good article, how, how to ensure that missing middle housing is not missing from your city's policy and planning and zoning. I guess you can't, there it is. Um, it's backwards for you, isn't it?
That's right.
Um, it, anyway, it's, it's just, there's just a lot of pressure to try to, um, build housing for, for, for all of our, our residents. And, um, it's a, it's a value that I hold dear and it's a value that I hear from many people in winners that, you know, they want, um, more equitable housing throughout. So I am supportive of the project. I, I am very supportive of, uh, uh, the, the project answering the flooding that has, uh, been historic in that part of the city. So I, I'm very pleased that that's going to be addressed. Those are my comments.
Okay, thank you. Harold, do you have any comments?
Yes. I, uh, I don't remember any discussions about an identical project in actually one. They got, uh, um, building their own houses. Has kind of almost discussed a made house in many respects. And the way, the way the, uh, interim solution, I guess you would call it for the collateral, I think is, has merit. I wish you could, could go on, very wise, but the time will run. I appreciate concerns of the neighbors. But the trust that you're finding out, or the developer, or the landowner, let's say it's the developer, building to, building map to try and move the property. Which is more than has happened in the last fifteen years out there. It's on, I think, wouldn't come in a good way.
All right.
That's, that's on the gun.
Okay, thank you, Harold. Um, Councilmember New, I think you had another comment?
Uh, just following what Jesse was saying about housing, uh, both Jesse and I started on, you know, as lays on to groups that are working hard on, on housing issues. And I wanted to say that I agree with what she was saying, that we do have to look out for, for more of the population and housing in the middle is really important thing. And I, I thank her for bringing that up. That's it.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you. Um, I'll make a, a few comments here. Um, first of all, I, you know, I've always been in favor of some bigger lots and, and that type of thing. Um, everybody knows that, but we're also in a situation where, um, all the extra costs for the, uh, flood mitigation and, and everything that goes along with these developments is what makes it really hard and why everybody, um, is in a desire to go for higher densities because you can spread it out over more lots, the cost, and try to keep things somewhat more affordable for more people to be able to purchase. So, so it's kind of a give and take on that part. Um, but I do, um, agree with a lot of the comments that were made by other council members. Um, for me, if we're going to move this forward, um, I, I would want to see, um, number one, an April through October grading period so that we don't end up with a situation like we had in, um, uh, the Validus property. And number two, um, something, uh, figured out with staff on the maintenance and upkeep of the, of the drainage line. Because if that is allowed to overgrow and cave in or whatever, then we have, we're right back to the flood problem. Um, and I also, um, I believe it was Mr. Denham mentioned the possibility of, of making the set, the rear yard setbacks a little bit bigger on where they back up to, um, Orchard, um, to go to thirty and thirty-five feet. If that's doable, if you can still get the houses to fit on the lot, I like that idea as well because it does give them a more separation to the existing houses that are mostly semi-custom and custom homes. And just that little extra separation, I think would help. And then, um, the, the fourth thing is, uh, uh, remove an item twenty-three and, and keep the fifty-four lots. Because I understand the need to do that, um, because of the, the added cost like I mentioned before. So that's my thoughts and comments of this thing. Is there any other comments or concerns or anybody, uh, Mr. Denham?
John, can we, I need. Thank you, I'm new. Uh, so on, on condition twelve, I, I'm hearing maybe the, the timeframe is April first through October thirty-first or is that the timeframe you're considering? I think that would be acceptable to the, to the developer. Jim, raise your hand if you have an issue with that.
Uh, John, can you unmute Mr. Culver?
Jim, go ahead.
I have no, I have no problem with that recommendation.
Okay, thank you. All right, and, um, so anyway, I guess with that, we entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Can you want to also add that condition I suggested tonight about the removal of the block wall entries? And, and making, making sure that the neighbors know about it?
Yes, I'm sorry, that'd be number five on my list.
All right. You're looking for a motion to adopt resolution twenty, so twenty, okay, I will, I will make the motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty dash twenty with the changes that are stated to approve the mitigation, the long link ten subdivision mitigation monitoring report to adopt resolution attachment L and, um, adopt ordinance twenty twenty dash oh four with the stated changes.
Okay, we have a motion, my Councilmember Lauren, do we have a second?
Can we have a clarification on those changes? So that is the, the
Yes.
Condition twelve, that the grading period is April first through October thirty-first.
Correct.
Condition twenty-three would be struck.
Correct.
And we would add a new condition about the block wall entries and property owners being notified prior, forty-eight hours prior to their.
Correct. And then also the, the maintenance of the drainage ditch. Um, and then, uh, increased setbacks on, uh, um, the backup to Orchard. So five items.
With, with those changes to the conditions, I will second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a, in a second. Is there any other council comments before we do a vote? Okay, Tracy, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Sure, Councilmember Anderson?
Hi.
Councilmember Lauren?
Hi.
Councilmember New?
You're muted. John, Pierre's muted.
I had him and then he downstopped. Okay.
Mayor Park Tendyazi?
Hi.
And Mayor Callen?
Hi. Okay, with that motion carried unanimously, thank you, everybody. Uh, thank your staff and consultants for your input. And, uh, we will move on. We have remodel of the south side of the old PD into the finance and HR office and billing department. Uh, John, who's taking this?
Uh, no texting. Eric Clisero is going to take this item, so, um. Trying to unmute the chair. Go ahead, Eric. There you are.
All right, good evening, Mayor, council members. The city staff is asking council for approval to move forward and remodel the south half of the police department building to create a new finance and HR office. Um, this will also create a much more efficient and user-friendly office space for the finance department overall. A new location will not only create a more safe and secure environment for the staff, but will also make a much more accessible location for the public. The two offices for the finance director and HR manager will give them enough space to have private meetings inside their offices while allowing the finance director to be in the same location as their staff. As you know, now the finance director is upstairs, all the billing and everything is done, but the rest of her staff is downstairs. So it's not the best, um, situation for either one of them. Um, so this will actually, you know, obviously, uh, take care of that. As a part of the remodel, we'll add a new emergency generator that will supply full power to both buildings. When power goes out, can install emergency stairs to the backside of the city hall for emergency access. Um, along with that, we're also going to have two or three car chargers and in between the side parking and, uh, the new, um, finance, um, building. So anyhow, this is located just south of the new conference room we just built. And, you know, we're just taking the rest of that, um, building and building the rest of that, which now is just a waste of space. So, um, we're right now getting bid. We've got to do a little bit of asbestos removal of the tiles and then do kind of a clean air, uh, clearance check before we start moving forward. But, um, and that's, that's where we are right now.
And, okay, Mayor and council, just really quick, if I could add, um.
Go ahead.
Um, so this project, obviously a tight budget here, but, um, this project is being paid for one hundred percent out of impact fees uh, that have been collected for it. Um, I think Eric did a good job describing there. There's some key aspects to this. First is accessibility. Uh, city hall's a great old building, uh, but when it comes to accessibility, uh, it's, it's not great. Both for people coming in downstairs to pay bills, to do business with the city. But, uh, in addition, uh, for upstairs, uh, the, the upstairs of city hall does not meet, uh, any form of fire code. So the, the secondary egress out of the building is very important. Getting this down together, Eric describes the finance departments separated. There are also the idea of getting some of that human resources aspect together. And then finally, what this project's going to do, first, we got a grant for an emergency generator for City Hall. City Hall is actually important in case of some type of a disaster or an emergency to be able to stay online. We actually have some important infrastructure for all of our operations that is located here. He also points out the electric vehicle charging stations. Those are going to be paid through Valley Clean Energy is going to bring in no real grant on that. So this really is a compilation of money, but none of it is coming out of the city's general fund. All impact fees, so increased accessibility, better for the organization, but most importantly, better for the public coming here.
And one last important element that could possibly influence the finance director's stage this a little bit longer because he has a better facility.
Well, that settles it. Okay, is there any other questions or comments from council? Councilmember Lauren?
First, I'm really excited about this. We had some conversations early on about this direction and I'm really glad that it's going to come to fruition. But I had a question about safety. I have seen other cities that have updated their buildings to have certain types of blocks, certain types of ID pass codes so that people can't just walk in and out where there's sensitive information. Are we going to have an updated security kind of for our new base?
Yeah, so we don't know exactly what it will be, but that's definitely been part of the conversation. And if you look, I don't know if you've been in that building or been to the old PD, it kind of, it's already created that separation from public to people going inside. So the public goes in the lobby and we're going to put the same thing from last time when we go to PD the fire. So they'll be behind the glass there. So a lot of this started with the city manager back when, you know, last year when things were going on in other cities and there were shootings or whatever. Yeah, we want to create that separation where nobody can get to the employees. So that was just one aspect of it that kind of sparked the whole thing. And then, you know, it just, there's all kinds of other things that, you know, tripped it down as far as the need of getting people out of our, the older building, making it easier for the public to get inside there and then just making it safer. And like I said, the conference room, just if you open up that back door in the conference room, it would be right in the hallway of the, where these two offices would be. And then it just becomes open space and then the lobby out front. So there's a lot of it was predicated off of the safety for employees going inside and being locked in through different doors as well.
Thank you.
Okay, Christian. Mayor Protembiazi?
Yeah, I just want to make a couple of comments. I think this is a good project. And from what I'm seeing here, we're talking about a budget of $200,000, which seems pretty low, which I'm glad to see it be low. But I'm assuming this is going to be done by our fully booked staff. Is that correct, Mary?
That is correct. And I honestly don't see us going above that, but I'm not going to promise that. I'm just, I think we'll do pretty good.
I think that's great. But I think this will be definitely be an improvement to a building that we already have in place and we can put it back in use. Very much think this is a good project.
All right, Christian. Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Anderson?
Yes, I'm just curious what the insulation of the outer wall is of this nature. Are they planning to improve that?
No, so we will. Yeah, so on the design, as soon as we kind of get this figured out, I'll send everybody a kind of the plans of what we're going to do even before it becomes official plans. But so the, all the interior walls will be stripped out, re-insulated. There will be windows on the west side to bring in more light, windows on the east side, even though it's kind of an alleyway there between the two buildings. They can still let a lot of light in, fresh air that runs the AC. At the same time, getting the right type of windows that it's still secure. But all the doors, excuse me, all the walls on the inside will be stripped out with new insulation sheet rocks put back inside there.
Thank you. Councilmember New?
I'm getting at it.
Okay. I talked with John about this this morning and I think he did a good job mentioning that the money comes from impact fees and not from the general budget. And by saying that, I made such a fuss about the budget last time and salaries and all that. I wanted to clarify that this money has to be spent on this kind of project. And I think it's an excellent project and something that the city needs very much. And I'm sorry that we can't use money other ways, but that's the way it is. I think this is important. Thank you.
Yeah, and that's, we, John did make that really clear at the staff meeting as well. So when we're doing, you know, freezes and everything, I thought it was real important that everybody knew where it was coming from, so it's not coming out of anybody's pocket.
Thank you, yes.
Yeah, and I really appreciate the fact that Eric feels he can do this within the staff that we currently have. That's really good news because that's how we get a lot more bang for our buck rather than it having to go out to bid and be a prevailing wage job. So that's definitely appreciated as well. Scratch those dollars as much as we can. John, do we have anybody with a hand up or anybody from the public that wishes to speak to this item? If you do, please raise your hand.
Yes, I know, Kate Lattish. Kate, go ahead. Let me, ah, there you are. Good, Kate, you're on.
Great. Thanks, John. Kate Lattish, 400 Morgan Street, number 21. And I was going to hear the word accessibility with this. I don't know in what all ways the word is being used, but certainly if it makes it so that people who can't walk up quite a short, quite a steps into City Hall have better accessibility to staff and city services. I think that's moving things in a good direction though. In the past, before the downstairs conference room was built, I had to miss meetings that were happening in City Hall because I just, I couldn't get up the stairs and somebody wasn't available when you go around and buzz the little bell and that sort of thing. And so I appreciate the consideration that happens in that regard with this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Is anybody else, John, from the public that wishes to comment?
No mayor, no other comments.
Okay, do we need to do a vote on this, John? Or was this just for our information or?
Maybe just a vote of authorization would be nice.
Okay, we will entertain a motion. Councilmember New?
I move that we authorize the destruction of the facility at the east side of City Hall for
I'm happy to second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember New and a second by Councilmember Lauren. Tracy, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Lauren? Councilmember New?
Aye.
Member Protembiazi?
Aye.
Mayor Cowan?
Aye. All right, motion carries unanimously. Okay, that takes care of all our discussion items. City managers report. John?
Yeah, Mayor, council, a couple of items. In last week, there's been a number of things that have come out regarding the COVID-19, new restrictions from the state, trickle down through the county. The one thing I want to really assure the council is some of us on staff are in some key meetings regarding COVID within Yolda County. And we're going to try and do our best to represent the business interests. Councilmember Lauren indicated some of the messaging that is getting out for the actual spread of COVID within the area. And so much of it has to do with some of the family gatherings and somehow getting the messaging out along those lines. Obviously, you're starting to see spicing a number of cases, mostly because of increased testing that's going on out there. So good on the testing, good on the identification, but some of the things that are happening to our business community are especially harsh at this time. It looks like that the new restrictions are for, are really crazy. It sounds pretty serious. And but from the staff perspective, I can't tell you that we're going to stay on this. For, I guess staff would like to thank everybody in town for going out and buying all those aerial fireworks to replace the city show this year. We didn't do it, but it looks like we probably, just from the whole notion, probably increased fireworks by 10x comparatively. So thanks for the fireworks show. And I can tell you, some of us spent the entire night laying on our dogs trying to keep them down. And then finally, the good news, the swimming pool is going to open for lap swim. There are a couple of things that we're working on. First thing that's going to kick off will be lap swim. We're also working with some of the swim teams in the area, which not only will include youth from winters, but we've got a very good relationship with folks in Backville. So offering, we have the ability to do two five-hour sessions each day with the amount of staffing that we have. So we're going to really work to have that and see what we can do. Shout out Kate Lattish, Sally Brown, gosh, drawing a blank, Jim from around the corner here. Folks who certainly have participated in our little swim committee. Diana from the city staff has worked at the system, online registration, online payment. So it's all going to come together. So we get the pool going and we'll see how it can go. But enough can't be said for, you know, Kate and Sally and the folks. Really a good group to work with and I think we've got our stuff together. So anyway, thank you, that was my report.
Okay, thank you, John. We're going to close the meeting tonight. Councilmember Lauren sent me a note. Tom Neely, who was a longtime Winters resident that passed away yesterday. If one of you knows a little bit more about him than I do and wants to say a few words about him and his history in Winters, please do so.
I think John does.
Yeah, I had a couple of things said. Tom, over the years, he lived in the country. He and his partner Charlotte Kimball lived there. Tom was an attorney. And I want to express how important they were in the community library project. They certainly because we were trying to get the first library measure passed in town. That's the first time that I ever met Tom. And they were very passionate about the library. And the first round, it didn't pass. And I will tell you that getting to the community library was probably one of the most heartfelt projects you could ever imagine. Tom played a really important part in that. An absolute gentleman, I think that he I know there's a music group in town that Councilmember Lauren is a part of and I think he was like one of the founding members, but
He was the founding member. He started it, yes. Wednesday Night Music Group, shout out, thank you.
Anyway, Tom Neely, absolute gentleman, a really important member of the Winters community and without question, a guy that you'll miss because he was, he was quite a strength on a lot of things.
Okay, thank you. We'll close the meeting at 8:33 in Tom Neely's honor. Good night, everybody.
Thank you.